June 10, 2020, special meeting of the Board of Selectmen will now come to order. I'd like to thank everyone who's joining us via Facebook Live as well as all of you who are joining over the phone. We are for the first time back together in person, the Board of Selectmen. We're wearing our masks, so forgive us if you can't hear us. We are all indoors, so we're trying to follow all the rules. If you've joined via phone, please be sure your line is muted until you're called upon. Maybe to start, I'd like everyone, if you'd like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag, United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation.
All the participants, for all.
Thank you. It's nice having you guys here to see us together. Okay, so right now, again, just a reminder to mute your line if you're not talking because we're trying to leave them open for the public hearing. So we're now going to call the public hearing portion of the meeting to order. So I'd like to first ask that the following people are on the line. James Sullivan, Stonington Director of Finance.
Present.
Thank you. Beth Ann Stewart from the Como. Beth Ann, are you on?
She might be muted. She muted herself. I see her.
I can hear you, Beth Ann. Thank you. And just to check, did Brittany Stolpin from the Learn Project, were you able to join? Okay, if not, we'll see if she comes later. So, by any chance is that Brittany?
Yes, this is Brittany.
Oh, wonderful. Perfect timing. Thank you so much for joining us. So just for the record, that's Brittany Stolpin from the Learn Project. No, that's great. We're just calling the public hearing portion of the meeting to order now.
Perfect.
So it is now called to order. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to give an overview of the program we're going to discuss?
Sure. The Neighborhood Assistance Program, it's a tax credit program through the Department of Revenue Services. The way it works is nonprofit, area nonprofits can solicit local businesses for donations, and any donation they give to these nonprofits, they can then seek a tax credit through the Department of Revenue Services when they file their state income taxes. Depending on the type of program the nonprofit is doing, there's different, it could be a different reimbursement rate. It could be 100% or 60%, depending on the type of program. So if it is 60%, which I think Learn is, if somebody gave them $100,000, the local business would get a tax credit of $60,000, and then the program, Learn, would have $100,000 to execute their organizational goals. This year, we have two applications, one from the Como, which they're an annual application. They've always been approved. I think everybody in town knows they do. Learn last year was the first application we've had from Learn. What they do, Learn is an affiliate, it's actually a regional organization that's affiliated with 25 towns, and they work with superintendents of school districts to provide, advise on programming, teacher education, teacher training, all sorts of programs. And what this particular program, Learn is trying to do through the Neighborhood Assistance Act, is solicit donations for what are essentially scholarships to Goodwin College. Brittany is actually representative from Goodwin College. They partner with Learn to provide scholarships to low-income students in southeastern Connecticut to go to Goodwin College for the program. And Brittany, if I mistake any of that, you can correct me.
Nope, sounds great so far.
So in a nutshell, that's what that program does. So both applications are asking for the maximum, which is $150,000 donation. I don't believe, I know last year, the Como got about, I think they got about $9,800 donations from, I don't recall who, and Learn received $145,000 from TBC, the Davis Valley Communications. So there's, at least Learn's good experience, there's some significant dollars to be had. So that's, they're asking for the same thing this year, so I'll put it to the board.
Thank you, Jim. Would either the Como or Learn like to add anything?
This is Brittany from Goodwin. I think Mr. Sullivan actually did a phenomenal job kind of overviewing what we're looking to do with Goodwin and Learn.
Thank you, Brittany. Thanks, Jim. Beth Ann, anything from your end?
She may be on mute.
We're just going to give her a second to see if we can...
Is that you, Beth Ann?
She's muted.
Beth Ann, I think you're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
Yup. I've muted my cell phone, and I've unmuted the...
We can hear you. We can hear you now.
I believe this is our seventh year pursuing these funds with a mix of results throughout the years, but all very important revenue. We specifically focus on our conservation project. This is our 75th year serving the community. It is our 51st year of being in the main facility, which has been in desperate need of upgrades. We have been working hard through the years to achieve this through various sources of revenue, and this is one of them. Things that we've done with the new building include, specific with energy efficiency in mind, have been new windows, insulation, lighting, HVAC, and plumbing fixtures. So this is just yet another means to achieve the goal of upgrading the main facility.
Wonderful. Thank you, Beth Ann, and for all the work both your programs do. So now I'm going to pause to give any residents or on the line that wish to speak either for or against the program. As a reminder, you can press *9 on your phone to unmute yourself. Give it one minute. Doesn't look like anyone's on the line. One person, alright, they're going to mute it. Okay. Okay, going once, twice, okay, hearing no other comments. We're going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and now move on to the next for the discussion. Could I get a motion to approve the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credit application from the Stonington Community Center and the Learn Project? Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, a second? Any discussion or questions from you guys? Is that even there? No? Clear. Yeah, thank you guys for a great overview. So all those in favor? Aye. Aye. The motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you all of you for your great work, and Jim for all the work you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
You guys are welcome, of course, to stay on for the rest of our meeting, but you're also welcome to leave. So now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of special meeting minutes from May 21, 2020, and June 3, 2020. So here, a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of May 21 and June 3.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussions?
No.
Corrections and changes? Nope, from me there. Thank you.
No corrections, I mean.
Alright, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. So we've received so many applications for boards and commissions, it's been amazing and inspiring. So we have a number of them to just enter into correspondence right now. And as a reminder, or anyone who might be watching or listening now or later on, we'll interview them to correspondence. We all, I usually reach out to the chair of those commissions, see if they want to interview the person, or if they already know them, or if they feel comfortable, we'll just move likely ahead next meeting with the appointment, or we might interview the people and see, or sometimes there might be more than one person interested, and then we'll have to do an interview and see who might want to become our standby. So for now, these are just for correspondence. Anne Harvey is interested in serving on the Public Communications ADHAP Committee, which is great, and I think we're going to get another application tomorrow, so we might actually have to do an interview and see who's there or have some alternate. Kizla Harma is interested in serving on the Commission on Aging, which is wonderful, and is former town employee. Austin Clark is interested in serving on the Shellfish Commission. Anne Marie Dagnow Clark and Stacy Casada are interested in serving on the Beautification Committee. Melinda Carlyle is interested in serving on the Board of Assessment of Appeals as an alternate. Matthew Bowden is interested in serving on the Mystic Harbor Management Commission. So that's really exciting. Anyone who's listening, there are still other openings, there's time before our meeting in two weeks, if you want to try and compete for one of those. So there's lots of spots still available, so thank you. The next one is a resignation from the Architectural Design Review Board. George Winkley and Susan Collins are resigning from the Architectural Design Review Board. We will send them an acknowledgement and thank them for their service, and also we're very happy that Sue had to resign. She now works at Town Hall, but we do thank them both for their tremendous service to the board. Under Old Business Update on COVID-19, just to say, we had a call today with our regional coordinator. All the hospitals and health committees are on it as well. Things so far still progressing in a positive direction, with very few hospitalized in New London County. Introductions keep going down throughout the state. June 17, the governor moved up phase two. To that date, we have information on the town website and on social media for people to check in and look there, even trying to present updates and links to find things on the state site, because sometimes it can be hard kind of digging through everything. So we encourage people to check our site first and also give us feedback if there's ways we can help improve the communication on that, also if you guys look and have feedback. And overall, yeah, we've been hearing mostly positive things from businesses and residents, things have been reopening, but I guess our other update is Town Hall reopened, so we're here on Monday to the public. It's been going really well. We have signage for people to enter and exit certain ways. We are asking everyone to wear masks when inside. We have more frequent cleanings, sanitation stations, and sanitizer stations, and the transfer station, two weeks ago, opened with no appointments, and that's been going well. And Human Services is slowly rolling in their own plan with more information coming out soon, but they continue to serve residents virtually for now with some new exciting opportunities for in-person check-ins starting, so that'll be great. And then during our discussion at the end, we can go into anything more unspoken. So new business, the next discussion is about the ordinance. Want to thank you to the Denison Society for their patience with getting this on the agenda. So this has to do with a tax-exempt ordinance. This item would typically be acted upon at a town meeting, however, we decided to consider that by the Board of Selectmen instead, pursuant to Governor Lamont's Executive Order JJ. Again, hence the reason this has been something we've been waiting to do for some time, and then felt we needed to proceed before the next tax cycle started. So I think Marcia Standish, our tax officer, are you on the line, Marcia?
Yes, I am, Danielle.
Thank you, Marcia. Do you mind providing us with an overview of their request?
When a nonprofit acquires property after the date of assessment, they may ask for an abatement of taxes from the date that they purchased the property through the end of September. And the Denison Society purchased this property early on in October, October 30th, so that's about 92.1% of the year, they would have this as a nonprofit. They're also required to file a quadrennial return form for the purpose of what the building was going to be used for, which was storage of some of their materials, and therefore they would be granted the following October, but this year's taxes are already established because they were not the owner as of October 1 of 19. So under this particular provision of the law, they're allowed to, if you approve this, to have their taxes abated for that period of time from the date of purchase through the end of September, which would be about $6,189.74 abatement, and they would pay $530.93 for most of the month of October. But it's based upon your approval for that, and they have been a longstanding nonprofit organization.
Thank you so much, Marcia. I believe we also have David Evans, the Treasurer of the Denison Society, joining us. David, did you want to add anything?
I'd be glad to respond to any questions. The, just as a little bit of background, when this property came onto the market through a foreclosure, a number, three of the trustees, myself included, decided that this would fill in what we referred to as a doughnut hole in the property. It's on the side of the road that we leased to the nature center for a dollar a year, but it was an 1800s house with some history, and with the potential to provide opportunities for genealogical work for the community. We're looking at a variety of things, and we have in the homestead across the road way too many artifacts that have been collected over time, so this is an opportunity to house them and also to display them over time, because we think there are a lot of things that we can add to the historical background by virtue of this.
Thank you, David, so much. I was actually very happy to have a separate meeting down there this morning, so I got to see all of this outside, at least, this lovely area. So could I get a motion to start to approve the ordinance?
Yep. I wanted to say before I make the motion that about 10 years ago or so, I was a trustee of the Denison Society. I don't believe that's going to impact my judgment on this, but I just did one with this call.
Thank you for disclosing. We trust your judgment.
And still move with regards to the motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, turn. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it and look forward to being able to open things up again and have you look inside as well, Danielle.
Us too. Well, thank you, David. Thank you, Marcia.
You're welcome.
So the next business item is street numbers, which June pointed out to us last time, so they are very important for sure.
They are very important, yes.
Don't laugh about assigning street numbers anymore. The request is, the first one is that the street number for map 44, block 1, lot 4A, become street number 152 Minor Pentway, Parkett, Connecticut, 06379. Do I hear a motion to approve the street number?
Absolutely.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next request is that the street number for map 11, block 7, lot 2, become street number 15 Schiller Ave, Parkett, Connecticut, 06379. Do I hear a motion to approve the street number assignment?
Absolutely.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. So the next segment is comments from the public. Again, as a reminder, if you're calling in, you can press *9 to unmute your line. We'll give it a minute. Okay. Are you... Hello? My name's Sarah Seating. Okay. There's no comments from the public, leaving.
No, no, there's comments. Can you hear me?
Oh, you're...
Excuse me.
Okay. Could you say your...
Can you hear me?
Yep. Could you say your name?
Yep, absolutely. My name is John Pistaleese. I'm president of the High Ridge Homeowners Association off of Pequot Trail. I'm calling in reference to the Elm Ridge Golf Course Solar Project. I'm presenting today on behalf of the community opposition for the Elm Ridge Golf Course Solar Project. My name should not be new to board members. I've actually sent two emails, one on April 28 and one on May 5. Am I coming through clear?
Yep, you're crystal clear.
Okay. So I reached out to the First Select Woman. In my email, I described the Green Sky's first notification to four of our association homeowners. At that time, I requested town to take up the issue and respectfully pause the project until after the COVID-19 pandemic, at which time the residents of Stony could organize an opposition against this particular project. Stacy Haskell, actually probably Danielle referred me to Stacy Haskell, which then referred me to Keith Barnes, town planner. Keith followed up with an email that basically stated that town can provide comments to the State Siting Council, and that there were no comments on the previous submitted solar projects from P&amp;Z. So basically, he said there probably wouldn't be any comments on this particular Elm Ridge solar project. On May 5, I again reached out to Keith and copied the First Select Woman. In this email, I discussed my conversation with Heather Summers and her input regarding the placement of the Elm Ridge Solar Project in a residential neighborhood. In the email, I indicated the placement of the solar project would materially change the character of the area. Again, Keith Barnes responded with, "The town is not in the driver's seat with these projects," and provided a link to the Siting Council. Again, not much help for a resident that has no understanding of town responsibilities or state Siting Council process, okay? Since then, a group of Stonington residents have organized the community opposition for the Elm Ridge Golf Course Solar Project. And just coincidentally, in parallel, the owner of the Elm Ridge Golf Course issued a statement in the day newspaper, so he must have got wind that we're trying to, you know, trying to defeat this particular project. We've had three meetings as a community opposition group, and we've created a website, an online petition, and a GoFundMe page to try to, you know, stop this. But due to the current social distancing and COVID-19 pandemic, the petition has had some success. You know, the opposition group has garnered 56 electronic petition signings and circulated a paper petition with greater than 10 respondents. You may think this is an insignificant number of respondents. I would counter the argument that this project impacts a very localized group of residents, and approximately 70 respondents is significant. I'd like to read just a few of the comments from neighbors, residents, and the community from our line petition, okay? And I'm going to read probably a half dozen or so. I have probably 15 or 20 here. And basically, the community is saying it would directly impact the neighboring farm and properties in a negative way. While solar is good, the location is not appropriate. "I live in the neighborhood surrounding the site, and I don't want it so close to my residence when there are more remote access, more remote areas." "There's a lot of concern from the residents regarding the long-term environmental impact of these installations." And there's a lot of documented evidence on the internet that say these installations are loaded with heavy metals, and they're sitting right on top of our aquifer, that both Westerly and a lot of Stonington residents actually get water from. Another comment, "I live in a beautiful town, and I would not want a panel farm next to my property." You know, basically, inappropriate mix of industrial and residential zoning. Opens the door to destruction of the beautiful pocket part of Connecticut. You know, what I'm trying to say is, this is not appropriate for our area, and I know it's very, very difficult to stop this, but I was recently, I didn't make contact, but recently, the team has made contact with Rob Simmons and requested his advice in this matter. Rob indicated that the Board of Select Women should get involved in this matter on behalf of the residents. Now remember, we got 70 residents pocketed around this golf course or this solar installation. As I learned, the Connecticut Siting Council does not listen to community opposition, but has, and has no significant weight in the approval process. That came from a lawyer that we contacted regarding how to, you know, go forward. However, the Siting Council does request input from the First Select Woman and the Board of Select Women, as shown in the letter of record from the Siting Council, with Danielle Cheeseborough. So what am I looking for? I'm requesting the Board of Select Women, and therefore the town of Stonington to get involved on behalf of town residents. In other words, the Board of Select Women must take a stand and be part of the public record whether this project would materially impact the character of the area when viewed from the residents' eyes. The town, Danielle Cheeseborough, need to, we said, need to reply back to the Siting Council by July 5, 2020. Now, I'd like to discuss this.
John, so this is just public comment, so normally the formal process would not be to discuss this. We can set, as we said, Town Hall is open to the public, so we can set a meeting to discuss this and bring in Keith, our town planner, who oversees the work for zoning. I know he engaged in a number of emails, and I think I saw, actually, his responses were very helpful. They educated me, at least, because this is the first time I've learned about any of this. And again, we should sit with him because he'll understand better. And I believe it was maybe just a student yesterday, and I can go back and look at emails, that the Siting Council actually put up the actual link to review the application from Elm Ridge, because we hadn't even been pretty to it. So I know part of that has an environmental impact study, visibility assessment, decommissioning plan, noise study, stormwater analysis, and several others. We have not, as I said, it just came out, have not been able to look at that. Again, the input we got from Keith, from past experience and guidance, was that if anyone from the town were to submit any sort of letter, it would come from zoning and not from the Board of Selectmen, so we need to look into that. That's first I've heard of this in that capacity. Additionally, the letter, the only letter I've received was more of an FYI with the kind of steps and comments, and that's the public comment period, which we did want to share with people, is until July 4, and there's a link where people can provide comments, and there's different types of public participation available. So we'll look more at it, and we can also follow up with our former First Selectman to see what his insights were in terms of bringing in the Board of Selectmen, because I don't believe there's any precedent to do that. And just so you do know, we are looking at the concern that was just recently brought to our attention about the chemical in the groundwater. So far, what we've gathered is there was a similar case with opposition due to similar reasons and theory, and their finding was that solar panels are enclosed systems that would not chemically degrade over time, and therefore the panels do not have the potential to discharge pollutants into the ground or groundwater. I'll yield a minute to maybe let Deb speak, because I know she's planning to also try and follow up on this groundwater risk.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything now, but I do plan to follow up, and we'll take a look at some of the other towns as well, reach out.
And John, just so you know, Deb is a licensed environmental professional, so that's why she'll look further into the groundwater concern. I know I always share groundwater concern. I'm very concerned with the type of chemicals that are used on lawns and places similar to golf courses, so I share concern about chemicals and the water waste. So we will look at that for certain, but I think some of the information you got may be different than what we've received from a legal and a process standpoint, so perhaps you could reach back out to Stacy and set up a time to actually meet either at Town Hall, or if it's better, over a call. We could do either.
I can do that, but remember, you've got 70 residents that are opposed to this particular project. I mean, that has to mean something.
Well, I have to reiterate, we have to follow the right process and procedure, and we have a lot of checks and balances in town, and if it's not appropriate for the Board of Selectmen, if it's zoning, we have to respect that, just like we wouldn't do something that the police commissioner is supposed to do versus us. So we will look more into that, and maybe you've gotten some different legal advice than we have, and we're open to learning. We're all new here, so we'll certainly find out. And we'll also find out more. I don't know enough about solar or solar panels in terms of, we said, the groundwater impact, and we haven't yet seen their plans or how they might, you know, not make them as viewable from residential point of view, or those driving by, or those golfing. So, you know, none of us is... and we're, we're open to, to learning. We're all new here, so we'll, we'll certainly find out. Um, and we'll also find out more. I don't know enough about solar or solar panels, um, in terms of, we said, the groundwater impact. And we haven't yet seen their plans for how they might, um, you know, not make them as viewable from residential point of view or those driving by or those calling. So, um, you know, none of us have seen those plans. It might be that the solar panels aren't even visible. So let's, um, maybe we could all take a look at that. We'll be sure the information gets out and then we could have a follow-up call or in-person meeting.
All right. So my question is, how many people do I need to bring to this meeting?
It should just be, I mean, it doesn't, it, the amount of signatures are, I mean, as far as we know, the process is still, it's about the Siting Council. This isn't in the town's hands. So this is a state issue.
Well, the town, town can make comment to the Siting Council.
And ask him residents and, and the public. So I think that petition is probably very...
Yeah, but I, but I, but they do not, they do not take residential comments with any significance. That's the, you know, that is the...
But again, that's not what we've heard, but we can, um, we can certainly, uh, follow up and ask about that, but we've heard they, they do take comments from the public, um, into account and take them.
Technically, they take comments. They have to take comments through a state organization. Do they weigh them very heavy? No, the answer is.
Okay. That might be subjective, but we'll, we can follow up. But I think for our meeting, I mean, it's just, we want to have a productive meeting and learn more about your concerns. Um, so I don't, to me, if you summarize people's input, but obviously, you know, any members of the public are welcome to meet, but I just want to set the expectation. As far as we know, i- it's not even a place where we should be weighing in. And if we are, then we're gonna need to do more research. And obviously, the view of seventy-plus residents will weigh in, but so will, um, you, we'll have to meet with Elm Ridge, why they want it. We'll have to meet with others who are pro-solar and will need to weigh in on a lot of accounts. So I, I can't make any comments or promises right now, but we can have a meeting to, to follow up on that.
Okay. So I should contact Stacy and set up a meeting?
Yep, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, John. Thank you.
My que- my question is, I mean, that will be an in-person meeting?
It can be. Is that what you're comfortable with or it could be a phone call?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. So again, you could follow up with Stacy. That would be most appropriate.
All right. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, it's not. Um, the next item on the agenda is comments from the selectmen. So maybe Deb for you to start.
I just, I have been following and attending virtual meetings and I'm not gonna summarize them all. I'm just saying that I've been really impressed with how they've been going. For instance, some, there was an inland wetlands meeting last week and the applicant was able to present and the councils were able to look at the information and, and I thought it went very well. Obviously, you know, most of us would prefer to be in person and I look forward to that, but, um, you know, so I have attended facilities and I will attend use occasion and, um, I will listen in on Board of Ed this week. But again, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll write a few notations to be added to the minutes if there's any other significance there. Um, my only other comment is next week, the underground storage tank at the town dock is scheduled to be installed.
That's fantastic.
Fabulous, and I am so excited.
I'm so excited. We went down and talked with, um, uh, Snepala on Monday. So it should be hopefully at certain point, yeah, I think, actually all ready to be hooked up to an actual boat by July third. So it takes like a few weeks, but they, yeah, should be down there next week and then maybe by the Fourth of July, the boat will get there, fuel.
So that's good. That's a great one.
Thank you. And thank you for your help with all the environmental considerations down there. And June will be happy, you know, I think the original proposed budget was over seven hundred thousand for that spot, and it's now well under two hundred thousand.
Yes, that's, that's great.
So it's really exciting.
That's great.
Thank, it's a good thing.
That's really what happened.
Okay. June?
So the only thing I have is for K through twelve, it has to do with, uh, water pressure at Dean's Mill School. So like the, the schools are, they're completed. They're, they haven't been occupied. Um, there are a few things that need to be done with the air handling systems and balancing everything, going through all of the seasons. And because the school's closed in March, it's gonna delay some of that balancing until the schools are open again. Um, and that might delay our closeout paperwork that goes to the state for the audit for our final reimbursement. Um, we've gotten most of our money back, you know, from what the state was going to give us in, in a grant, um, but the final amount, it's still two years out. But once we get that, um, once we get that money, that can go towards our, our debt obligation. A Dean's Mill School, though, as soon as the, as soon as the, um, addition was opened, there was always an issue with water pressure up on the second floor. So over the months, we did all different kinds of things, and I'm not gonna list them all. Peter Anderson has a full list, but we paid for water expansion tank, like a pressurizer, like all these different things inside the school, because Aquarian said, well, it's, it's the design. The design was inadequate for the size of the building and the height and everything else. What we did, we've done everything we can. We've exhausted all options. It's, it's enough to flush a toilet and use the bathroom, but it's still inadequate. Now Aquarian has said, okay, fine, we'll, we'll take a look at our meter. So they have agreed that, yep, the meter that we said you needed to install is too small. So we're gonna change out the meter, but there, we paid for it and it's fifty thousand dollars. And so I, I, and so the concern is that we've already spent extra money trying to fix this pressure thing inside the school. And now Aquarian's like, okay, well, we were, we were wrong. We have to change out the meter and that will help. Um, so I just, I just think maybe if we could send a letter to Aquarian saying, there should be some cost sharing on all of this, because we've already spent the money. And I can get those kinds of details. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, the hu- the ground has to be dug up. There's a whole thing. And it's outside. So it's, it's, but it connects the, the pipes to the road and main source, so.
Oh, I know. Thank you. Have you sent through like an email summary of what, when, and who maybe from Aquarian told this to K through twelve and then what, how much Peter and the school have spent on it? And then we can...
Well, that's the school. It's, it's the building committee. Yes, it's, it's also not of our, of, out of our budget to do that, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So if you get those, then we can reach out to them. They're usually responsive at least.
Okay, all right. Um, and then same thing with the virtual meetings. Everything seems to be going really well. I mean, on planning and zoning has public hearings. There's thirty to forty people that are lining on with the meeting. And they're speaking. Not all of them, remember, just mute themselves. There's a lot of echoing, but boy, there was, you know, one person that was presenting and everything echoed, but they just pushed on and they sent it. So, you know, it's, it's working really well. Mission on Aging hasn't met.
No, car change task force hasn't met, um, and, uh, Police Commission's meeting tomorrow night, so, but, yeah. It's, it's all changing, right. The only thing is the, is the, is the Aquarian and the, you know, the cost of the meter, so.
Fine. No, that's great. That's a good segue, because one thing I wanted to get your guys' input on is the whole public meetings, um, to keep doing them virtually versus some had said, could we do them outside, which at first I thought was a great idea. And then as we thought, you would just kind of see accessibility angle, it might not be the best idea. Um, and then, um, for a hybrid, so during our call at the COG, at the Council of Governments this morning, I asked what other towns are doing. And for the most part, it seemed like virtual meetings will go on through at least the summer. Some, they said probably forever. Um, they'll bring back in-person, but they'll keep doing, um, the virtual. Others said they might start to move away from the virtual and go fully in-person. But basically, everybody said at least through the summer, they're gonna be offering the virtual. And so, at least to my knowledge, um, our capabilities within at least the town hall infrastructure, um, we couldn't do outdoor meetings and still have them virtual, but there's no Wi-Fi here in the area. I don't know if that might change at all or worth looking into if we did it, like a parking lot outside on the schools. Um, but we'd have to be sure if somewhere accessible, the chairs, I think just outside might be too hard to do. Um, so I think then it, it limits us back to inside. Um, we have to see, we have to work with the schools because they're closed. If we could even use their meeting room and what it would take in terms of custodial services and, and other things. Um, so we can reach out to them. The police station room may, may be able to be open again. Um, human services room will be closed for a while. It's also pretty small, not many people, six feet distance could fit. So we'd need to see for having, if we wanted to do a hybrid of in-person and virtual, where it could fit. Um, some of the boards and commissions, we know typically get no one from the public or one or two people. So those might be ones that want to start thinking about doing a hybrid, um, you know, where it is virtual, but also in-person option. Planning and zoning will likely need to keep going, um, with the, the virtual for the bigger meetings, because, um, and again, they can do a hybrid. But we think until we can move everybody over to like just in-person, we really need to still offer the transparency of the virtual. Um, since some people, even I think in, um, the next phase, if more people are allowed inside, there's still people of the high-risk category and the elderly who might not feel comfortable coming out.
And they shouldn't, and they shouldn't come out.
And they shouldn't come out, yeah. They actually shouldn't come out. So we don't want them to not be able to participate. So I think we need to keep the, the hybrid option at least going for the foreseeable future. And I know a lot, I think a lot of boards and commissions have been hesitant to meet because it is a lot to learn and get up to speed. And so I think if we, and if you guys agree, we need to probably send the message at least through the fall and it might be the longer, like, this is gonna be the only way to meet. They're gonna have to learn and do the virtual. So we, um, you know, both Stacy and then our IT, Roger and Ann Louise here, have helped put together a great, um, kind of tutorial. But, and then we've already done one training with some board and commission, either chairs or the people who be the type, kind of representative. We could do another round for people, um, if they want to start meetings. I know it's been a while for a lot of them not to meet. But I think the message likely is, all the boards and commissions are gonna need to either identify a point person, if it's not the chair, that's gonna take on the br- of learning how to run a virtual meeting. Um, and I think in part of that is, you know, on, on our side, um, it takes a good bit of work for staff to either stay late or do, do more, um, in terms of tape the slide, as well as the web acts, as well as reporting. So I think we also, I'd like us to talk maybe today too about, um, setting a time for our meetings going forward, so we could set more established Board of Selectmen meetings. So maybe do them at like four o'clock, at least through the summer. So that way, you know, it's still after town hall closes, but it's not adding a tremendous amount of hours. Um, Stacy's already...
She's been crazy.
I feel, I, I, at first, I mean, this is a great time to meet. I mean, it really is.
And we thought for the public, like normally, I feel like it should be later, but since it's being recorded and it's also virtual, like maybe it's okay to have it be earlier?
Yeah, it might be worth reaching out to the public, because I have had a couple of people say to me, oh, you know, it's not good if you meet before five, because people work till five, which is a totally understandable thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, you want to see how many people that impacts and, and why maybe. You're looking at a taped version and having the ability to still reach out.
Yeah.
If that would work. My only concern is how we figure out, you know, I'm thinking in terms of just we, you know, we may have some upcoming site plans or facility plans that we want to have a public meeting and have public input to look at those plans and to make sure, you know, normally, we'd have a big public meeting and people can come in. Sometimes if we can't do that, have different places around town. Or kind of brainstorm about how we can do that to make sure there's enough communication that people are able to see those plans and comment on them and feel like they are able to get that.
So the largest places to do that are the cafeteria in the high school.
Yeah.
And, um, and the meeting room is the new central office.
Yeah.
So, and, um, and even those places, you can remove half of the chairs. I mean, you, it's easy to set up, but we would need, you know, coordination through the Board of Ed to be able to have those types of, uh, apps.
And it's the extra cleaning, yeah.
You know, maybe get things posted and people could, you know, come by them and get them. But, you know, I think it's gonna take a little bit of work, but I, I don't, I want to make sure we don't lose that opportunity.
Yeah.
And I do think it's important really to reach out and ask people about, you know, because I love, I love Mary's four block. It's great, but I want to make sure that there aren't people who can't wait.
So maybe before we, maybe, um, the next week, if we could all take on some like outreach. You know, we can put stuff on, I feel, the page and stuff, but you guys do some personal outreach to say, you know, even just looking at it through the summer, through August. Like, are people okay with the four P M? And if not, you know, let us know what time and why and kind of, if there's workarounds. And then if, um, or also if we, we do the four and then people, we start getting feedback, we can change it. I mean, it just takes twenty-four hours. No, we can change it. But I think it's nice to have more of a set schedule so people can know what to expect. Um, so maybe we'll wait a few more days before we set anything, but, um, and I do think, you know, four P M, maybe, you know, not for, forever, but for the next, um, couple of months through the summer, it could be better.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And I, and really, you know, the meetings were at seven. So there's people at seven who aren't gonna come out, right? There's people at four who can't come to the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, K through twelve, we always start our meetings, oh, like at five, four-thirty for the Finance Subcommittee and around five o'clock. So that might be it.
Yeah. Maybe in the fall, we look at like a five o'clock or even five-thirty. Um, but yeah, I just want to be, I think also cognizant of how much kind of unpaid overtime when people are working.
That's cool.
Um, so that's one thing. But yeah, we do want to be really accessible to the public. And I think that is the other thing, like we can talk more with Keith, because the planning and zoning thing has been going well, where they can still share things virtually and people can see things on the screen. Um, but I know it's not quite the same as being in person, so there is that hybrid. So I can also reach out to the school just to feed their thoughts on the public meeting room and, you know, what it would take, you know, if they would be open to it in the summer or if it's more like fall, or, you know, what it would take in terms of custodial time and, um, and whatever else they need.
And a shared cost. I mean, so, that's, yeah.
Yeah. And, um...
And not the rules to be, you know, there.
Yeah. And I think, you know, and it doesn't actually need to be for every board and commission meeting, but for the bigger ones that are kind of important. Um, okay, no, that's really good. Um, okay, so we'll look at that. And then, um, the only other thing I guess I'd say is, um, we've been having, um, we have some interviews through the new Director of Administrative Services this week. Um, hopefully, we'll have some good news to share next week. Um, but, uh, but they were great candidates that we interviewed. It was a great, um, full day spent interviewing four different people and, um, we've, we've narrowed in, so hopefully we'll have some good news next week. And then, um, the only other thing is I've been talking with both the, um, police chief and captain as well, some residents, actually both the C four, a few different people have reached out, kind of thinking about what we could do more as a community, um, on both obviously race issues, but also just the whole idea of like the unconscious bias many of us have, whether it's about race or income or, you know, pick your, pick your issue. Um, those are more we could do. So people have been sending some really interesting ideas. So, um, I'll try, I'm gonna try and put together maybe a little group to talk about it more and put together a shortlist. And if you guys want to weigh in or share ideas or, or think about it, ranging from like kind of a book club or a reading program for summer, reading for the library, um, or, um, having like a speaker series, um, both virtual and in-person with different types of, um, people coming in. Like there's so many great people in our community that could already are trained to speak on this and we haven't really tapped into them or featured them. So, but I, I don't know if anyone listening to us has ideas or thoughts of what more we could do as a community, um, to kind of have a, a bigger conversation, um, recognizing we all have, um, our own kind of bias that maybe we don't even recognize. And this could be a time to really start, um, putting a mirror in front of all of our, our faces and think more about it. But I think those are kind of the most pressing, I think. Anything else?
Good to actually see you. Or see half of your face anyway.
Okay. So with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.